Hi, I'm Bonnie Gabowitz and this is Ward Talk. Here on Ward Talk, we discuss issues and solutions of the city of Ann Arbor, and we invite our council members to discuss it. So today from Ward Five is Erica Briggs. Welcome Erica, this is your first time here on Ward Talk. So a special big welcome to you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you Bonnie for having me. I wish I could be there with you in person, but it's great to be meeting with you virtually.
So tell us a little bit about you, since this is your first time. How long have you been in Ann Arbor? And what interested you on becoming a council member?
Well, I moved to Ann Arbor about 21 years ago now. And I have been, when I first moved into Ann Arbor, I was, I just ended an abusive relationship. I was a single mom, had a little baby, a six-week-old baby at the time, and was really restarting life coming into Ann Arbor. Just kind of hit, I was 23, just out of college. And it was, you know, I've, I've, I've been really proud to make Ann Arbor my home. You know, I've kind of felt uplifted and supported every step of the way and been lucky to be able to really get engaged in, in, in local politics and over the last 15 years in local government. So I went to grad school here, got my master's in public administration. My background had been working with environmental organizations. And my first job out of grad school was running the Get Downtown program, which encourages folks to use alternative modes and to get to work downtown. And that got me kind of hooked on the issue of transportation. And so, because it's really fun to be able to approach it from a variety of different areas, whether, whether it's environmental protection or public health, or thinking about it from how our city grows and how it complements our land use. And then, and started getting, thanks to that job, really started getting more engaged on, on transportation issues. So I got involved with Washington Bicycle and Walking Coalition and League of Michigan bicyclists. So I started getting engaged on some sort of advocacy issues. And then also started volunteering on different cities' boards and commissions. So I served on the Energy Commission and Planning Commission and worked for some other organizations like the Clean Energy Coalition in terms of developing the city's first bike share program. Ended up going back to school and getting my PhD in, in public policy. I just finished that last, I guess in 2020, last year. Feels like a long time ago.
So it sounds, sounds like you've really dabbled in a lot of different areas of being involved in, in the city and trying to find ways that you can help out.
Exactly. And so it was just kind of a, I think the more you get involved, the more you want to learn and the more you want to do. And so when I realized that there was an opening--
So you got the bug.
I decided, I decided my time had come and that maybe I could, could make a difference serving on council. So yeah.
So you're in Ward Five. And is there anything going on you want to share with us as to any news about Ward Five, any progress being made?
Gosh, there's so much going on these days. It's hard to know exactly where to start. I think last night, there was an important city meeting on the development of 415 West Washington, that old city facility right across from the, the new YMCA. And the city is currently undergoing a pre-entitlement process on that. So basically going through a process of identifying, what are the community values? What does the community want to see out of that? Out of that site if it's developed? And also, how do we address some of the challenges that we have with that site, such as environmental contamination? And some of the, the limitations that, that site has in terms of, it's in the floodplain, there are chimney swifts. It's a site that we want to see the tree line go through. And this originally came about through the kind of thinking about developing more affordable housing there and more housing. And so that's sort of the, the process that's being moved forward right now in terms of getting, getting input on that site. And so that was an important public meeting last night that city staff took some, took some additional feedback on. And I'm trying to make sure that I'm fully up to speed on all of the issues that, that we are trying to, that kind of come to a head on that site and how we can make sure that we are really prioritizing the issues that are most important.
And anything else going on in Ward Five?
Yeah, so we've been, as folks have probably be very frustrated about, there have been a lot of power outages the last few months, particularly in the August storms. And so we--
Would you say that your ward was more affected than other areas of the city?
Um, I am still waiting for data on that from DT to understand where their problematic areas are. Certainly, the issues that are coming into city council as a whole feel like that they're focused particularly on some areas that are sort of in the Miller neighborhood area, that there's, there's an area that's been had some particularly persistent power outages over the last month. So coordinating with DT to understand what their long-term plans are. And I've been a little, a little concerned about some of the solutions that they've proposed in terms of really extreme tree pruning measures, which obviously tree pruning is, is something that is important and is part of maintenance. But when we're seeing a third of the tree canopy removed, that feels a little drastic.
I understand there, there was chatter about the extent to which they were cutting back the trees and that it was possibly, you know, more extensive cutting than they needed to. But I don't believe the utility, it's like, this is the way we do it. And this is the way we're going to do it. And didn't seem to be much room for discussion.
Yeah, I think they come in with their own standards. It's 10 to 12 feet clearance around power lines. And I would, I'm seeking a little more thoughtful approach in Tree City USA, where we identify maybe where the most frequent power outages are in terms of tree-related issues. If we can, if we can identify those, figure out are there ways that the city can help support some of the undergrounding of, of the power lines? Are there, are those standards? Can we work for a slightly more, a little more conservative approach when we, when we first do the pruning? You know, how, what ways could the city be supporting these efforts? So hoping that we can, you know, take a little more thoughtful approach to this. And yeah.
Okay. Anything else before we go on with the, the whole city?
Yeah, so I think some other things that people have seen changing in the fifth ward are some of the street reconfigurations, some permanent, some temporary. So First and Ashley were converted to two-way streets. So that was a big change for folks. And we've, we've been using some different sort of treatments in those areas. And then Main Street is another area that's had a pretty different reconfiguration in terms of moving from four lanes to lanes, both directions, to, to three lanes with a, and a bike lane. So the, the Main Street project is a pilot one. And city staff is really trying to get data around, what are the impacts on motorized travel? What's, what are the impacts on transit? What are the impacts on non-motorized travel in the areas? And also pedestrian crossings? And so they're, we're going to be, they're going to be evaluating that through the fall, figuring out what's working, what's not working, making some tweaks to, I know they've already changed some of the signal timing. And then coming back to council with a report on that. So.
So, so is the timeframe in terms of the study a matter of a few months?
Yeah, exactly. I think that those, I believe they're going to be out in October. Doing, collecting some, some data on a lot of the issues. They like to kind of see when something, when the roads are, when we see these sort of changes, there's, there's often, it takes a little while for things to sort themselves out. And it was particularly hard timing, because when the reconfiguration happened, it was right when U of M was starting. And so it was, it felt particularly challenging that first week. So.
And I just want to clarify, when you talk about looking at the data, are you looking at input from citizens? Or looking at cameras and seeing what the action is? How do you get the data?
Yeah, so most of it is looking at what actually the traffic counts are. So going out and determining what are, what's, what are the traffic volumes out there? What are, what kind of delay? They've done precounts and then they'll be doing, you know, kind of pre, pre-changes and then post-changes. So looking at what, have there been significant delays? And for motorized travel, moving across the corridor? What times those, are those, are those delays? Are there, are there, you know, have we seen increases in, in bicycle travel down that corridor? Or I'm hoping that we'll see pedestrian counts in terms of, what is it, are we seeing more stops for pedestrians that are seeking across the corridor? So a lot of that, it's just data collection in terms of actual, actual numbers of--
And is there a way for citizens to actually let you know what, what they think? Is there--
They have been doing that. So listen to them or not. So we've been getting lots of emails, both in favor and opposed to the changes. There are, right now, I don't believe that, that there is a, a plan to do a survey work of, you know, what do folks think of, of the changes? Right now, I think we just need to find out, how is it, you know, technically, how is it working? And get some of the engineering analysis of that done. And then, you know, once we have that information, it may, maybe there's a need to gather, to gather kind of more citizen input. But I think first phase is just figuring out what's happening.
Well, that's a lot of information for, for Ward Five. I'm glad we had a chance to talk about it. We're going to take a break now. And when we get back, we're going to talk about all city news and what's been happening this month.
Okay, sounds great.
This is Bonnie Gabowitz for Ward Talk. If you'd like to contact us, you can at ctn@a2gov.org. You can also follow us on Twitter at twitter.com/annctnannarbor. We'll be right back.
Voting absentee in Ann Arbor's upcoming election is so easy, even a kid can do it. Simply register to be an absentee voter by sending the proper paperwork to the Ann Arbor City Clerk via email, mail, or in-person. As the election approaches, absentee voters will receive their ballot in the mail. To vote completely darken the box opposite each of your choices. When complete, place the ballot in the secret sleeve so votes cannot be seen and the number stub is visible. Place your ballot and secret sleeve in the return envelope. Seal, sign a date in the designated area, stamp, and mail. Or deliver your ballot in person to the city clerk before the close of polls on Election Day.
I'm here to drop off my gear.
We know what it's like to go to war, to bravely step forward and sacrifice for what you believe is right. We see those who are redefining what it means to serve, to be a patriot, a hero, and to save lives. From our nation's injured veterans to the faces of courage across America today, we see you, we support you, we salute you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Hi, this is Bonnie Gabowitz. We are dealing with Ward Talk again. And we are talking to Erica Briggs from Ward Five. Erica, you just talked about all the happenings in Ward Five. Let's talk about the whole city now. We have a lot of big issues that we've been dealing with. One being the city administrative search. I understand that just recently you interviewed two possible candidates. And it was this week, as a matter of fact. Tell us what the process is and, and where you're going from here? And how much the citizens can be tuned into what you're doing?
Yeah, absolutely. So we just, on Tuesday of this week, we had interviews with two interim city administrators. Peter, Peter Burchard was one, and then Milton Dehoney was the other one. And so I think that--
And just to, just to mention, neither of them are in the city system now.
Correct. They're both external candidates. Both come with a really long history in municipal government and serving as city administrators and are really being considered because of their expertise in the field and their ability to, to, to come into Ann Arbor and really provide some stability right now. And so these are interim city administrators that really thinking of bringing somebody into place for nine months or 12 months, or, you know, just not a significant period of time. But so we as city council members have, have seen interviews with both candidates. Those are available online for, for the public to see as well. And I assume on the CTN website. And we're, we've been asked to, to provide our feedback in terms of, through a survey. And then we're going to be having a closed session next week, I think, to discuss that and making recommendations as a body, likely at our next council meeting. So.
All right. So just to make sure we understand, this is for a job for a period of time of a year?
Yeah.
As an interim?
It's an interim, right. Exactly, exactly. So we are also in the process of searching for a new city attorney, because our longtime city attorney, Stephen Posthumo, is retiring. And so that process is also going on simultaneously. So if folks are looking at the agenda or listening to us discuss candidates, just make sure that they're, they're tuning in and they're, they're not getting confused between the city attorney and the city interim city administrator discussions that are going to be--
Well, the, and to clarify, the administrator, the council has decision-making power to choose. But attorney, is it, is that a different situation?
No, there are two positions that council oversees, the city attorney and the city administrator. So those are the two direct reports to council.
I, I would think it would be particularly challenging to interest someone to take on a job just for a year. So is this potentially something that you can, you're offering that could be extended if you're happy with them?
Well, these people, these candidates have been recruited. They are, they recognize that this isn't an interim position. And they recognize that they're being brought in because of their, being considered because of their really extensive background and experience in local government and their ability to, to come in and provide additional stability and, and keep, yeah, keep city government moving while we're being more thoughtful in our approach to looking for a long-term city administrator. So I don't know that either candidate really has any interest in becoming a permanent city administrator here. Both are retired and this is, they just love local government. And this is something that they like to do to give back.
Okay. And we have something new that's happening right now. There's, there was controversy just recently about the lack of renters in the community, which takes up more than 50% of the population, of them having a say in government. And there's an interest in developing a renters' commission that would give them voice and, and more involvement in decision-making. So tell us about that, since that's brand new.
Yeah, absolutely. And I really want to credit Councilmember Redina for bringing this idea forward. This is, was something that he campaigned on and was really, wanted to make sure that it was something that we moved forward in that, in this first year. So renters' commissions are relatively new. This is, as far as we're aware, about the third one that would exist in the United States. There may be some others out there that we're unaware of. But to the best of our knowledge, this is relatively new. But city council has a number of different commissions that, that advise us. So we have the Energy Commission, Environmental, and Planning, and Health and Human Service. We have, we have a lot of different commissions that are, that are providing advice to council on, on issues so that we know as we're considering changes to our ordinances or even to understand what ordinances maybe need to be changed. We rely on our commissions to, to be able to dig into these issues in a more substantive manner. And so, as you mentioned, over 50% of Ann Arbor residents are renters. And yet, we typically lack that representation on council. So we currently have no renters that are, serve on city council. In the last city council, there was only one member of council, Zach Ackerman, that was a renter. And historically, this is, this has been the case. And so it is, it's useful to, to have a body that is comprised of folks that are renting, that can bring forward some of the issues that are most challenging from, from their perspective, and also begin looking at trends in terms of how we can make sure that we are a city that as we are growing, seeking to grow the amount of housing that we have available, and much of that growth will be in rental housing, make sure that we are, we're doing so with, with good guidance.
So how does a renter in Ann Arbor get involved in the commission? Is there some kind of process where they can apply? Or they have to be invited? How does that work?
Yeah, so I think we're going to be, the way that this usually exists is, city has a, posted on the city's website is a list of all of our boards and commissions. And when there's openings, there's an application for that. And so there, I don't think that there's an application posted yet for the renters' commission, but I suspect that will be up there shortly. And so certainly, anybody who's interested can go and fill that application out. But we also want to be deliberative in terms of deliberate in, in our recruitment so that we are, one of the pieces that's included in the bylaws is making sure that we're not just getting folks who are renters, but we're getting renters that represent a variety of different perspectives and backgrounds as well. And so we have a new committee on equitable community engagement. And so that, we may tap into some of their expertise in terms of thinking about how we do a little bit more outreach. But I think we're going to be a little more strategic in terms of not just relying on an application posted on the city's website to, to get word out about this.
And you, you mentioned there are only about two or three cities who, who have a commission of this type now?
Yeah, and there, I believe it's city of Seattle and then King County also has a, which Seattle is located and also has a renters' commission. So it's, this is, I think those were the two locations.
Yeah.
So yeah, we're, we're trying to break ground and making sure that we're, as we're considering issues of affordability in Ann Arbor and housing development, that we're really getting the, the perspectives that we need to move forward thoughtfully in our community.
All right. Well, we'll definitely revisit this topic. And I just want also to mention that you just expanded the ordinance on using your home for, your personal home for business, especially where so many people have had to, you know, not go to the office, but create an office in their home. So how, what is the new regulation that expands the use of the home?
Right. And so, yes, as you mentioned, during COVID, we've, this, we've had challenges for a while, but I think COVID really brought those, those issues to the forefront. There was a recognition that there were probably a number of, number of people in our community that were in violation of our, of our, of our ordinance. And so it was a good time to revisit it. And, and previously, we had sort of, our ordinance had, had defined what businesses were appropriate in, to operate out of a home. And so we've, we've take, we've moved away from that notion of uses and more, are more supportive of the notion that operating a, a business out of the home is something that people are increasingly going to want to do.
It's really more of a concern of how, how does using the home impact the outside? You know, the, the streets, the, the sense of quiet, that type of thing. So.
So it's more, you know, that, those are the issues that we're focusing in on in the ordinance now is number of visits and deliveries and how folks can store things that might be associated with their business. So you can't just, you know, if you were doing bike repair in your driveway, you couldn't leave those tools persistently in your driveway. You know, something that might kind of continue to blight the, might blight the neighborhood if kind of you could see the activity from that business all the time. So things are confined on the property and need to be in. Our noise ordinance is going to be, we're relying on that to address some of the nuisance issues. So hopefully, this will provide folks a little more flexibility to, to have home businesses, but also recognize that, that they need to sort of thoughtfully exist within our, within our neighborhoods.
And I want to make sure we put in a plug for you. I understand you offer some information online. You have a weekly newsletter, a bio weekly. What's that about?
Yeah, I think one of the, the things that I've noticed is that people struggle to get information about what's going on in local politics. And so I want to make sure that I'm communicating what I'm doing and that people can get access to that information about what, what's happening in local government easily. So I offer a, I send out a newsletter prior to every council meeting. And it has the highlights of, of what's, what's on the agenda, my thoughts on, on, you know, some of the key, some, if there's anything of, of particular relevance that week at council, some different upcoming community meetings. And, and I've been holding bimonthly kind of ward meetings as well for folks to be able to attend.
And this isn't just for the members of your, residents of your ward? It's for anybody who wants to--
Exactly. Yeah, it's for anybody. I mean, I do tend to focus on Ward Five issues, but it's, I have folks signed up from all across the city. So people can go onto my website, ericaforA2, and easily sign up for the newsletter and I'll come into your inbox every couple of weeks.
Great. And in the minute we have left, just to maybe offer your personal perspective on what it's, it's like to be working on the council, how, how it's made you grow as a person?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just, I have to say, it's, it's delightful to be able to, be able to engage in your community more deeply and learn about issues that are impacting, you know, not just your kind of immediate neighborhood, but sort of more broadly across the entire ward and across the, across the city. So I'm, I've learned, learned lots over the last nine months. And I hope to put that, that, that to good work in terms of making sure that I'm trying to address the things that are, that frustrate people and make government work a little bit better and work a little more transparently and make sure that our community is, is better in, you know, in 10 years than it is today. So.
Yeah. Well, I want to thank you for giving us an update on Ward Five as well as the city. And I'm particularly interested in your online information that you've offered us. That's news to me. So I'll be looking forward to reading about that.
Wonderful.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Thanks for doing these, these Ward Talks.
And this is Bonnie Gabowitz for Ward Talk. You can connect with us on twitter at twitter.com/annctnannarbor. You can also email us at ctn@a2gov.org. I'll see you next time. I'll see you next time.